Good afternoon. Now I want to bring the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order, and the first item is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Whitmarsh, seconded by Counselor Davis. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And the next motion is adoption of the minutes, the regular afternoon meeting of July the 10th. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Sparrow moves, and seconded Counselor Whitmarsh. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried. And the next motion would be to resolve and dispel, shall close for the items on the agenda and on table, and could I have a motion, please? Counselor Arneson, seconded by Counselor Davis. And Counselor Richter, you have an item to add?
No, I want to delete item E2.
I'm sorry, you want to what?
Delete item E2.
E2?
I don't think item E2 should be in camera.
Okay, well, we can discuss that when it's we're in camera, so we'll delete it here. We'll delete it when we go on camera, if it's required. Counselor Fox?
Um, legal.
Legal, okay. Fox, legal, thank you.
But they aren't table.
All right, I did. Thank you. And so with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. All right. Bringing the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Langley Council back to order, reconvene it. And the next item are presentations. We have two presentations. The first one is a historic context statement and thematic framework, and Don Luxton and Associates are here. So, and thank you very much for coming.
Your worship, for those of you who do not know me, my name is Elaine Horricks. I'm heritage planner for the township. I'm here today with Don Luxton from Don Luxton and Associates to provide you with a presentation on a project we began in 2016 that is now nearing completion. In 2012, Township Council endorsed a heritage strategy that outlines strategic goals and actions for heritage conservation to 2022. Goal seven pertains to updating heritage policies within an integrated planning framework, and one of its associated actions is to develop a historic context statement and thematic framework for Langley. Additional policies that support this work include the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places in Canada, the Local Government Act, the Township Sustainability Charter, and the Township of Langley Official Community Plan. The key goal of this project has been to develop an overarching framework for understanding and assessing Langley's historic sites. In combination, a context statement and thematic framework provides for the evaluation of existing sites on the community heritage register against identified themes to ensure they have measurable community significance, along with analysis of potential gaps in the register as to what may be missing. It provides for the development of statements of significance for our historic sites that together better convey Langley's history, and it provides for the identification of themes that contribute to community identity, which can inform neighborhood planning processes, educational activities, urban design projects, cultural tourism, and other locally-based economic initiatives. As well, it provides direction for future conservation policies and activities. This project has been developed through a process of extensive research and community consultation. The Terms of Reference was prepared in consultation with the Heritage Advisory Committee in 2016 as part of their annual work plan. A task force was appointed, and Don Luxton and Associates was retained to work with the task force to complete the scope of the work. Research has included compilation of work published on Langley in addition to research undertaken through other regional, provincial, national, and even international archives and agencies. In addition to targeted consultation with specific interest groups, five theme stakeholder workshops were held during February and March. An interactive open house took place in April to seek additional input on the emerging themes identified in the workshops, and draft preparation and a review period has defined the final phase of the project. The task force functioned as an invaluable resource for historical discussion and examination throughout, and I would like to express appreciation to these very busy people for bringing their considerable knowledge and thoughtful direction to the project. The final draft received the unanimous support of the Heritage Advisory Committee in June, who recommended it before to council for endorsement upon finalization. This document has been prepared in two formats, and a bridge summary document provided as attachment A to your council report, and a full-length background document provided to you under separate cover. Both documents can also be viewed online at tol.ca/rsharedhistory. We are a unique community with a deep history in the Fraser Valley. Our development has been shaped by major geographical, political, social, and economic factors. Thematically, this document identifies some of these formative forces that have contributed to our development here over time. The national theme for heritage this year is My Canada, and the province followed suit in choosing the provincial theme as My B.C. Perhaps we consider this Langley's response in the form of Our Langley, as it is about our shared history. I'd like to turn this over to Don Luxton, who will walk you through the components and content of the project, after which we will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mayor Froze and council members, I'm delighted to be here to discuss this project. It's been a very exciting project to be involved in, and very community-driven. I'd like to express my appreciation, first of all, to Township of Langley staff, especially Elaine Horricks, for all the work that went into this and the very careful management of the project. A number of our task force members are here today, and I'd like to personally thank them for their involvement, and there were also many dozens of people that attended those workshops and the open house that brought their input to this project, and it was all very much appreciated. And I'd like to sincerely express my appreciation for the involvement of the Kaitse and Kwantlin First Nations, who were also represented on the task force and provided invaluable information in addition through discussions that we had with them, and it's been an exciting project to bring that all together. This project is not just a history of Langley, it is really an analysis of the history of Langley, and it's kind of a, we were calling it kind of the history of the histories of Langley. Langley's been very well documented and covered and researched, and many of its stories are very well-known. But this is more an attempt to try and bring that all into focus and really look at the identity of Langley, its uniqueness, what makes it what it is, and how we can now begin to think about that in a way that allows us to plan for the future in terms of not just conservation of historic resources, but also commemoration and further celebration of the history of Langley. The historic context statement broke down into 10 categories, so the context statement is the beginning, it's taking the history of Langley and really compressing it into what is most crucial and important, and to describe everything that kind of really contributes to that identity. It starts with the land, not surprisingly, and of course, the Fraser Valley is a very unique context, and Langley is part of that Fraser Valley context in a very unique way. The Fraser River, the agricultural alluvial deposits are remarkable and really begin to define what Langley is. The First Nations have been here since time immemorial, and we recognize their presence on the land and their enduring presence, and that's really important to understand that they've been here, were here, are here, and so our work acknowledges that throughout, not just at the beginning stages of the document. The history of Fort Langley is, of course, well-known, the establishment of a European settlement on the West Coast at a time when this was extremely remote. The information that's been brought to this is fascinating, and we see in this image by John Alden, the settlement on Macmillan Island looking north from the fort. The material is rich and important and really places Langley historically within a broader context of the development of the entire West Coast. The Hudson's Bay itself, again, the story is well-known, how this was established, how important this was to promoting the agriculture of the Fraser Valley, and really beginning the tide of European settlement into the area. At the time, of course, Langley was at the forefront of what was happening on the lower mainland through the 1850s and the gold rush, the 1860s, in the 1870s, 1871 Confederation, 1873, one of the very first municipalities to be incorporated in the new province. And so Confederation and municipal incorporation kind of go hand in hand, as the Hudson's Bay kind of passes this all over to a new type of administration. Of course, the 1880s brings the railway to the north side of the river, but it still brings a lot, a level of access that was just unprecedented, and begins that flood of settlement, preemption of agricultural land, and the beginning of the community development that we see in Langley. At the time of the turn of the last century, of course, there was an unprecedented economic boom. It was driven by investment in the Panama Canal, which brought many resources to the area and also many more settlers, and the beginning of a much more developed road system, and as the municipality developed, of course, many, the communities began to establish themselves first at the intersections of transportation routes, but ultimately began to grow on their own, providing community services, churches, schools, that supported the development of those communities. We see a time period from 1913 with the collapse of the local economy, the First World War, slow recovery in the 1920s, and again, an economic crash in 1929, and the years of the Great Depression, and the Second World War that had a significant and profound impact on the residents of Langley. We call that the time of conflict and turmoil, 1913 to 1945. And ultimately, post-war Langley, so many things that begin to happen that relate to the modern world as we know it, the beginnings of the highway systems and the development of larger populations, but significantly during this time period, also a reaction against development and settlement, and we see the establishment of the agricultural land reserve, and we see Langley remain 75% rural, a very defining part of Langley's character. And ultimately, we brought it up to Langley today to give a snapshot of how this has brought Langley to the present, and also helps define Langley's identity. The thematic framework part of the project then takes the historical movements that have shaped Langley and breaks them down by theme. And the reason for this is that that allows us to then analyze how thematically history has played out in development, and this also gives us more broad clues to not just historic sites, but also trends, events, and people that are important as part of this development. We have broken it down, and this is part of an ongoing development of these type of thematic frameworks, I'll explain that in a second, into five major themes, 30 sub-themes, and those sub-themes break down into 37 more components, in order to capture the richness of the history and identity of Langley. This is based on a standard format that is used by Parks Canada through their National Historic Site System Plan, thematic framework that was developed in the year 2000. The five main themes, peopling the land, developing economies, building social and community life, expressing intellectual and cultural life, and governing Canada, are the five main themes that we feel do express the broad movements of history, but through further development and discussion, we've brought those down to a simplified approach in terms of those five themes. Habitation, which is the equivalent of peopling the land, which is much more respectful of First Nations and their habitation. Economies, governance, society, and the arts. To run through that briefly, habitation is the interaction of humans with the land, how it was settled, how it was developed, how it was planned for, and how we've conserved it or not conserved it. And so it relates to a broad range of sub-themes that relate to community development, natural and cultural landscapes, as well as multicultural settlement. These breakdowns, these are the high-level sub-theme breakdowns. In this case, and you will see this over and over throughout the document, we lead with First Nations to acknowledge that they were here and a defining element, and moving forward, the multicultural settlement relates to many different cultures that came to Langley, and ultimately, a much more diverse Langley that exists today, as well as the development of individual communities. When natural and cultural landscapes relates to many, many different aspects of the environment, including those things that have not been touched and those things that have been modified. Economies, economies again relates to the first economies of the First Nations, transportation and infrastructure, communication, which includes everything from the very early 1865 telegraph lines to telephone and more digital interaction recently. Extraction, production, and distribution really relates to the resource industries, agriculture, fishing, lumber, and other industrial and manufacturing activities, commerce and service industries, banking and finance, shopping and retail and service industries, and labor. Governance, administration and politics relates to coastalish governing structures, civic administration, senior governments, and a unique defining feature of Langley, which is, of course, the international border. Law, order, and security, the police, the RCMP, and the fire department, and defending Langley. Langley at war, Langley as the home front. Society is how people congregate and come together in society and communities, and it relates to a broad range of components. Spiritual life, First Nation spirituality, religion, and burial grounds, cemeteries. Education includes First Nations education, public education, post-secondary education, healthcare and social services. Sports and recreation is a surprisingly important part of community glue, as I call it. How people interacted through sports in both an amateur and professional way is fascinating and important. Community associations, exhibition fairs, and cultural festivals, and social movements are all part of the social mix that defines the communities. And finally, the arts, very rich and important part of what makes Langley what it is and what it was, starting with coastalish artistic expression, and again, we've been very fortunate to have the participation of the Kaitse and the Kwantlin in talking about these issues, architecture and design, visual arts, theater, music, dance, literature, cinema, all the performing arts and cultural pursuits. Community collections included, in my experience, for the first time in the Langley inventory in 1992, where we looked at the importance of archival and museum collections and community collections to the community and media. Newspapers, radio, and television, and how that has supported community development over the years. That's the broad snapshot of the historic context statement and thematic framework. As you can see from the documents, it's rich and deep and broad, has required a lot of listening and a lot of thinking, and again, I'm grateful for the community support that we've received and community comments, which have made the document much more interesting and complete by bringing in many, many personal reminiscences, memories, archival information during the course of the project. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for this, and thank you to the committee for all the work they've done. I had a very interesting read yesterday afternoon as I was relaxing, reading the attachment, and just learning so much more about Langley that I didn't know, and it is a very comprehensive document, and what I got out of it was it really provides a path moving forward, because history doesn't just stop, it continues to be made, and I think this document really captured what we hadn't, like you said, a history of histories that we already have. So I want to thank you very much for all the work you've done, and to our staff, and to the task force. I do want to know, what does ARP stand for on those helmets?
Air raid.
I've got one in my office.
I've got it something, air raid precaution.
Caution, because it's one in my office, it's been saying it publicly since the 40s.
ARP was a broad-based organization provincially, and of course, we were expecting air raids from Japan during the Second World War, so there was, there were drills, and there were all kinds of things, and people organized into kind of little regiments, so there was quite a local movement there. Yep, yep.
All right, several counselors have commented questions. Counselor Fox?
Well, what a tremendous document, and I just have to applaud yourself, and I'm sure you are the main co-ulator of a lot of information. I see Jane out there and many others who contributed.
I had a lot of help.
Yeah, and a lot of very, very high-level professional help, too, and it certainly shows in this document, and I'm sure this could be taken and expanded tenfold if you had the opportunity to do it, because there's that much more information in it. And I just wanted to thank you and all those that contributed, because this is a tremendous document. Haven't had enough time to go through it all, but I just wanted to allude to a picture on page 118. I think you got, on the right-hand picture there, I think you got the wrong name, it's Jot Johnny Farkor, that looks like Counselor Davis, in his early days, sleeping with his baby cow.
I never looked that good.
Okay, sorry, Johnny's got you one up, but yeah, I thought, no, it's just the cross-section of pictures, and I was actually
I'll have a look at that caption.
Looking for Howard Watell and that 1950s Fort Langley baseball team, but I didn't even see him there either, so you're missing a few names. Oh, sorry, that was on page 111, but no, excellent document, and thank you. It's going to take some time to obviously go through this and really synthesize all the detail, but the progression you've, oh, there's the picture right there. But the way you've synthesized it, I think, is just excellent, and probably there'll be more writing to come out of this, so excellent, thank you.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you very much. I was able to participate in one of the events, and so it was very enriching to learn more about our history. I have a thought based on your experience, not just for writing this one, but it seems that this would be a really appropriate and helpful way if we could put these into our local libraries and perhaps into schools. I wonder if this is something that other communities do, because there's so many people, not only myself, who have lived in Langley for some time, but also people who are newcomers. I think it would be an interesting thing for them to be able to review.
We think there are many potential uses, and the wider distribution, the better of this type of thematic history, and one of, our experience dates back to 2008, when the first historic context statements and thematic frameworks were being developed at the local level. And what we have found in our work throughout B.C. and Alberta on these projects is that they help, we actually can't predict how they're going to play out at the local level, because people find different things that they attach to. The Town of Peace River in Alberta changed their civic motto to one of our themes, inspired by the peace, which was the story of the artistic endeavors of Peace River. So we think there are many potential uses for this information, and not the least of which is assisting heritage planning, but also community planning and understanding broader community issues and histories. So we feel also that it's very good to make these things broadly available, online is good, in schools is good, in libraries is good. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Long?
Oh, yes.
If I could just add to that, it is on our to-do list, it's on a checklist, to start a conversation between community development and the museum for the fall, to make this available in the local schools in some way, so we're already looking to that educational component. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Long?
Well, your worship, I just wanted to thank Mr. Luxton. I think we were very fortunate to have you lead this project, it's done a terrific job, and many of the members of the task force, and certainly the Heritage Advisory Committee are here, so thank you for coming, and thank you for the work, and I don't think we should minimize at all the work that Elaine did on this, she did a terrific amount of work on it. So it's a fabulous project, I'm so pleased to be, you know, even closely related with these folks. I think we should get some hardbound, so if we need some budget for that, come and see us. I think we need hardbound something, then it becomes a bit more distributable, and it can be a great tool for all kinds of things. I mean, how do you know when you're going, where you're going, if you don't know where you've been? So it's a tremendously valuable project and tool for all of us to use, so thank you very, very much, everybody.
Get a hardbound, we can give it as a Christmas gift.
It'll be on your table, at your place.
All my shopping's done, I love it.
Absolutely.
Coffee table book. Counselor Davis?
Thank you very much. I found this, oh, so interesting. To be honest, I shouldn't say this, Mark Beckham's not here, but I read this all weekend, and I never even opened the stupid package, so you should never do that to me. Anyhow, the pictures, I shouldn't, no, I just, you know what I'm talking, the pictures are really neat, like where do you go to dig up stuff like that? Like, you know, everyone's got, and anyhow, I sat, my uncle, or my uncle, my dad and Aunt Jean, who are both over 90, and the arguments, no, that's such and such, no, that's such and such, and it's really neat, because, hey, I just, that's, I think, a hard copy and gifts, like, you can use it, but as a gift, this is for somebody that is interested in history and whatnot, this, beautiful, I love it, it was great.
Thank you, thank you very much, through the mayor, if I may comment. Part of the project, and really the saying, you know, picture says a thousand words, is so true. What we are able to bring, not only through the extensive collection of the Langley Centennial Museum, which is excellent, but there's a lot of images that we've seen over and over and over again. So one of the things that we did on this project, and the results will of course be turned, there's many, many, many more images that are not in the document, so, than, many more than we could include, but part of the project was, we started actually at the beginning with a broad-based research, search of what is in other archives, which have not been located, and so there are, as Elaine mentioned, there's many other archives where we found material in the most surprising places, which is now available online, which we would never have found 10 years ago, say. So there was a lot that we were able to bring, some of the First Nations images, some of the other images, this fantastic collection, City of Vancouver Archives, which is just coming online now, and Library and Archives Canada, so we were able to find things. I'll leave you with one story that was so incredible to me, probably the highlight of the project. There's a picture in there of Helen Gabriel as a hairdresser in 1961 at the Vancouver Vocational Institute. I found that picture by searching Library and Archives Canada, didn't know the history, put it in our first draft when we met our task force, and Ashley Doyle from Kwantlin First Nations went, oh my God, that's Auntie Helen, she's still cutting hair, and the story that she went and showed Auntie Helen the picture, we were able to connect the picture to the story and a living person, and bring that to the table, that was just so satisfying, and that's, I think, one of the highlights of the project.
Thumbs up. Thank you. Counselor Qualley?
Thank you. I appreciate the work that went into this very much. I maybe didn't share Counselor Davis's enthusiasm for the entire weekend, I did do other reading, but I'm anxious to finish reading the book, so thank you for your efforts on this. I really appreciate the phone. I really appreciate the photos and the context of everything, and I guess my question was around what happens to this next, because I see this really as a valuable tool, especially at our museums and others, you know, of our municipal facilities, where residents can, you know, waiting in line, pay their taxes, pick up a hard copy, and have a little browse while they're waiting at some of our other municipal facilities. So what happens next? How does this?
Right. Thank you, through the mayor, a couple of quick comments. First of all, this doesn't replace any of the excellent histories that have already been written about Langley. I mean, you know, and I, I would be remiss in not acknowledging the, the writers like Jane and Mark Forsyth and all these other folks who have written so extensively and so well about the history of Langley. It doesn't replace that in any way. To me, it's a portal into that, and to me, it's also scalable and to the previous comment, modular, in that you can take any one of these topics or themes and do more work, and delve deeper and think more deeply about it, and probably will as more work is done. It provides kind of a, a framework for how to think about analyzing historic sites, thinking about historic events, and thinking about people who are important in the history of Langley. So there's much, much more that can be done. In other projects of this nature, what we find is that, for example, the section on religion, well, good heavens, you could write many histories of churches, and there are many histories of churches. I hope it inspires people to dig more deeply into the history of Langley. And what happens next is this does relate directly to a process we're going to be undertaking to finalize this, which is a gap analysis of the current heritage register to see if there's anything that we think could be more recognized and commemorated. And if we look at what Parks Canada has done in this regard, there's three main areas, really, of under-representation across the country, First Nations history, multicultural history, and women's history. And we can always do a better job there. And so that's where we think there will be further discussion and further research, and hopefully, if we do get this out into the schools and there's more educational discussion about this, I think it will just mean we'll have to come back in five years and do an update and, and keep it, keep it current. And so that would be, my hope would be, there would be a way to continue to refresh and, and make, continue to make this relevant.
Well, I think you've created an excellent framework here from which to work moving forward, so congratulations on that. And thank you to all the committee and Elaine for all of your hard work on this. I think, you know, there's, the clock's ticking, so today will be history tomorrow, so you're not going to run out of things to talk about in the near future. So thanks for the efforts to everybody on this, it's really well done.
Thank you.
Councillor Fox.
Just a suggestion, when you go to the schools, if I could suggest, you go through instructional services, maybe Dawn Tomlinson, and actually offer to put on a session at a professional day, where in fact, the teachers of history can actually become involved in the book, and, and rather than just sending it out as a document, okay, we finished this document, here it is. Because I think there's an element that can be built into the curriculum about your local community, and I think that there's a value associated, especially with the new curriculum emphasis on First Nations history, First Nations involvement in community, and so on and so forth. So I would really recommend you go and see if you can't in some way, shape, or form be involved in maybe an hour, an hour and a half session at a professional day, and really make the book come alive to the teachers that will take it to the students at whatever grade level they're involved with.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and yeah, a lot of great comments from councillors, truly was a great work, and I think you, you mentioned it, you know, this, this will inspire others to go deeper, and, you know, the best page is page 150, the bibliography, lots of great works there from people that are, that are with us in this room and others, and I know I've got at least one of these on my nightstand, I'm trying to get through, reading it every night, chapter at a time, and it's, there's some interesting books here. So thank you very much for all the work you did, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your very kind comments, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so the next presentation is on the parking bylaw review, and Mr. Cudrow.
Thank you, your worship. I don't think our presentation's going to have quite as many pretty pictures in it, unless you like pictures of parking lots, so.
Be as exciting, if not more. It has to be parking lots.
I do have a bound copy, if you want to put it on your coffee table, too.
Yeah, could we get that one hard, hard?
Hard copy.
Thanks.
So thank you for, for receiving us. The township undertook a parking bylaw review, which looked at parking standards, looked at parking requirements, and we hired Creative Transportation Solutions. Gary Gleg is here as well, he'll be assisting with the presentation today. So the presentation basically looks at some of the background information, the research that was done by CTS, literature review, some discussions of other municipalities in terms of their practices with parking. Looked at what's involved with pay parking or permit parking, if that was something to be considered. Evaluated three locations within the township in terms of the, the parking and the current status there. Did a case study of pay parking in Fort Langley, whether that was something that could be considered viable, and also the parking bylaw review, which essentially looked at the township's parking bylaw, parking requirements as compared to other municipalities. And then we'll finish off with some recommendations for a council to consider. So in terms of background, one of the things that we're trying to deal with is this perception of parking as something that's free. It actually is a commodity and should be treated as a commodity that should be managed properly. In order to do that, we need to understand what kind of demand there is for parking. So the township is dealing with issues throughout the community with increased density, which has increased the demand for parking, and there is a perception that there is a lack of parking in some areas. And that could be on-street parking versus off-street parking. Now, in terms of how we manage parking, there's the two sides of it, there's supply, so we could provide additional law-street parking. You could also do things like time restrictions on parking, which increases the turnover and allows more utilization of what's existing. There's also demand management. Land uses could change, which changes the demand for parking. Bylaw enforcement regimes could change, which changes how people park, the duration and, and that type of thing. Fees affects parking, in particular, off-street parking, and also introducing time restrictions to increase that turnover, are all ways of managing your demand. So I'm going to call Gary up right now, and he's going to take a look at some of the things that he discussed of other municipalities in terms of the literature review.
Thanks, Paul. Good afternoon, mayor, council, members of the public. So in terms of the study that we did, we also consulted with the cities of New Westminster, White Rock, and Surrey, recognizing that, A, they are bordering municipalities, so that it's thought that they're, that the parking habits in those communities would be somewhat similar to what we might expect to see. No, I'm not saying the exact identical, but to try to come up with this as close as we can. As well, the city of New Westminster and the city of White Rock, both have got very well-established and very long-term parking policies. So it was, felt that it was important to understand what their experience was, as opposed to the city of Surrey, which has sort of gotten into the parking management game a little bit more recently than those other two communities. So as a result of those, the consultation with those three communities, we spoke to the parking managers in each of those communities. There were some interesting themes that came out, and in particular note for councils, they particularly stressed that to us, and they also strongly suggested that we convey this to council, that these are really important elements because of the, of the way people perceive parking. The two most important themes I would like to suggest to you are, one, that people believe that they are entitled to free parking, no matter where they are in the community. They have this expectation that parking is free. So if a council is considering at some point to, to start charging, whether it's for on-street or off-street parking, it's really important to do a good education process upfront, so that people understand that parking isn't free, there is a cost associated with it. The other interesting point to, to deal with is that people believe that the road that's in front of their property belongs to them. And having worked on Paul's side of the fence for a number of years, I can speak with a great deal of assurance that that is a very prevalent attitude, and there are some interesting neighborhood altercations, let's say, that come about as a result of that particular perception. So those are the two points of, of a number that they strongly suggested that we convey to council. The other parts, very quickly, just to establish some guidelines and policies to implement parking restrictions, really important, otherwise council and staff are dealing with a lot of requests that may not be appropriate. They also strongly suggested using license plate input, both for charging for parking as well as for enforcement, because it reduced the number of, of challenges to the tickets. If a council is going to go towards on-street pay parking, use pay stations instead of meters. Meters are very much old technology, they're very expensive to maintain, and you have a high theft rate, as opposed to using the, the pay stations. Developing a solid and robust petition process for changing any parking regulations, so making sure that there's actually enough people. Oftentimes, you'll get a situation where there's a couple of neighbors that are arguing about who gets to park where, and then they'll come in and, and say, well, no, we want to have parking regulations, and it's a very localized problem instead of a broader, either block-by-block or, or neighborhood problem. And then finally, in, in, to help deal with those requests, is if you get a request that's by petition, please make sure that you collect enough data to confirm that there's actually a problem. Again, this gets back to this issue of perception versus reality. There can be a perception that there's a lack of parking. That may be true within 30 meters or 50 meters of your home or business, but 100 meters away, there could be an abundance of parking. So make sure that there's actually a problem. Give you one example, the city of New Westminster won't consider implementing parking regulations unless, when they do their, during their survey, that at least 60% of the parking stalls are occupied for that entire period of time. That's just one example, I'm not saying that that's an appropriate one for the township, but that way, they've identified and say, yes, there actually is a problem. So when it comes to pay and permit parking, and we're sure using the terms interchangeably here, pay parking being either on or off-street, and permit parking is what we call resident, often councils will get a request for resident-only parking to try to deal with, with issues. Again, I'm going to stress it, and I'm going to keep stressing it, make sure that you have the data to support the contention that there is a parking problem, first and foremost. And that way, you could, that makes the decision process a lot cleaner and a lot clearer. Make sure there's lots of property owner support. There's no point in doing a parking restriction if only a small segment of the community is actually interested in it. Make sure you set up some proper threshold requirements, so, in other words, if you're going to do the petition process, is it 50%, is it 60%, is it 75%, those sorts of things. Make sure the area is actually eligible for parking restrictions. Some communities, the city of New Westminster, for example, says, we will not implement parking restrictions for areas where the development is, is quite new, especially if they've asked for a parking relaxation, because they said, look, you asked for your development to have a parking relaxation, now you have to deal with it. Therefore, you know, no parking restrictions there. Make sure you talk to the business owners. Business owners obviously have a lot to deal with, but also the property owners. And then make sure you have the right type of parking regulation, so, and making sure that the community understands the implications of the different types of regulations that they may think will work for them. In terms of dealing it, if a decision is made to implement different types of parking restrictions within a community, whether it is pay parking, permit parking, or even a two-hour parking, there are issues around enforcement, as I'm sure council is well aware, but it's important for us to sort of reiterate those. As you expand the number of parking, areas with parking restrictions, that requires additional staff, because you have to manage that parking. As Paul said at the outset, parking is a commodity that needs to be managed. If you don't manage it, it just goes helter-skelter, so you need to manage it. The permits and residential parking system, in order for that to be effective, it needs to have quite tight enforcement. And there's a lot of issues around permits, talking to some of the communities. The people, for, just as one example, you'll get a visitor permit, a visitor permit parking, people will sell those. If there's a demand for parking, especially in an area where you have a hospital and the township has a hospital, if you were to implement a resident-only parking, and then also issue permits for your visitors, don't be surprised that they get sold. So one of the issues. How do you do the ticketing? Is it going to be by having a bylaw enforcement officer chalk tires? Or, as we'll get into a little bit later, there's new technology that allows a vehicle to drive by, record the license plates, and then you could drive by an hour or two later, and it automatically issues the ticket. And it has a picture and a, and a timestamp and all the rest of it, very difficult to argue those particular tickets. Adjudication, it's an important system where there's an independent third party to review the tickets and to say, yes, it's fair, or no, it's fair. And then finally, record-keeping, very important. People come, people go, make sure that you have good records, and you hang on to them in perpetuity. Very quickly, some of the different technologies, we've already talked about meter parking, that's definitely on the way out. Now it's numbered parking stalls with pay stations, or even better, you're starting to see more and more where they have pay stations, you input your license plate number, you can even have an app on your phone that communicates with the system, so that if you're running a little short on the parking, you can top it up, they work really well. Something that's really new that's coming out is performance parking fees, which basically says, if there's a high demand for parking, we're going to charge you more, if the demand is low, we'll charge less. So it's time variable, and it's dependent on the number of vehicles registered for parking at the time. If a, if a community is going for permits, permit parking, and I'll give, again, the example being the, the city of New Westminster, they have an extensive permit parking system. For the first two weeks of every calendar year, they have four admin staff, that the only thing that they dealt with was parking permits. So now they're moving to an online registration system with the hope that that reduces the, the administrative burden. So part of the, the responsibility for this effort for us was to take a look at three different locations. The first we took to look at was Carvall Transit Exchange, as I'm sure council is well aware, very heavily used, you can go by there almost any day of the week during the middle of the day, and you'll see a tremendous number of vehicles parked there. And that's only with Walnut Grove fully developed, that's not even with Willoughby fully developed. So we can anticipate to see even greater usage of this particular facility. The adjacent road network isn't complete. What we're suggesting, are, one of our recommendations to staff was, you should consider some on-street part, time restrictions as the road network continues to develop. It doesn't need to be 24 hours a day, probably doesn't even need to be on the weekend, but during the peak commuting times, so seven in the morning, excuse me, till six in the evening, Monday to Friday, just to try to make sure that there's, that expectations are managed as that area continues to develop. Langley Events Centre, as councils are aware, it's a multi-purpose facility, but it has both scheduled and unscheduled types of events. So you've got concerts, and you've got the community centre. It's virtually impossible to distinguish between the different types of users when they park, and to have a dedicated parking area, let's say, for the, the community centre, and a different one for the concerts, that sort of defeats the purpose, the point of having a, a multi- they park. And to have a dedicated parking area, let's say, for the community center and a different one for the concerts, that sort of defeats the purpose, the point of having a multi-purpose facility such as this, and with the parking, the way it's set up, is to make sure that you take advantage so that when there's a lull in one part of the facility, and another part of the facility is very busy, that you, therefore, the parking sort of takes, they share the parking, rather than having to have a whole bunch of extra parking. So rather than trying to manage, trying to deal with that, what we're suggesting at this point is, given the fact that you've got the unscheduled events, types of things such as in the community center, make it consistent with some of the aspirational goals of council to have things like car share, carpool, and electric vehicles, so preferred parking. So you're encouraging people to carpool and to do car share. And that way, you're addressing some of those problems, but at the same time, making sure that the event, the event center continues to be a premier venue for a variety of different types of events. At some point in the future, as that Willoughby area around the event center continues to develop and the road network starts to be constructed, it may be necessary to consider some on-street time restrictions. But, you know, at this point, we're just recommending that staff monitor that. Finally, Langley Memorial Hospital. The issue is primarily around staff parking, to a lesser degree, visitor parking, and the fact is that Fraser Health, as with all the other health authorities, they charge for the parking on the facility. There are currently two-hour restrictions on a number of the affected streets. Our recommendation at this point is just to continue to monitor it and then deal with the requests as they come in. And just for council's benefit, Langley Memorial Hospital and the parking challenges surrounding it is not unique in the Lower Mainland. Every other, all the three other communities that we surveyed, they all said that the hospitals were one of their biggest challenges, whether it's Royal Columbian, Peace Arch, or Surrey Memorial. One of the other things that we were asked to do was look at the possibility, is it feasible to implement on-street pay parking in Fort Langley? So, as you can see from the map in front of you, the areas highlighted in red is the areas that we considered for on-street pay parking, just to see how that would work. You'll notice there's a few gaps, but that's primarily because there's already parking restrictions in place in those areas. But we looked at the possibility of putting in pay parking in Fort Langley. The idea would be, while it would be in effect from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 o'clock at night every day, the capital cost associated with that is somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000, and that includes signage as well as equipment needed to do the enforcement. An annual operating cost in the order of $250,000. The revenue doesn't come close to that $250,000, though. So there's definitely a net cost to the township. The advantages of putting in the pay parking, yes, it definitely will increase turnover. There's two fairly significant disadvantages. One is that any time that you do implement a pay parking, particularly in an area like Fort Langley, you're looking that you're going to start pushing the cars then into the residential areas. And that's not necessarily a good thing. And that's why the community consultation piece is so important. The other part of it is that it has the possibility to impact businesses, and that's something that has to be very carefully looked at in terms of whether or not that's going to affect the commercial viability. At this point in time, our recommendation is not to implement on-street pay parking in Fort Langley. And I'll turn it back over to Paul.
So, another exercise that we asked ETS to undertake was taking a look at the township's parking requirements. The township typically outlines the requirements for parking in its zoning bylaw. Other municipalities also do it in their zoning bylaw, or sometimes there's actually a separate parking bylaw. But we tried to compare it to adjacent municipalities that have similar types of land uses as the township. So, the cities listed here, Delta, Quikitlam, Surrey, Maple Ridge, Abbotsford, were all surveyed. So in general, we found that the township's parking requirements were actually slightly more onerous than other municipalities. We required more parking in many cases than other municipalities did. We did have some other differences. There was relatively fewer land use categories in the township. We were more generic in terms of the parking requirements for the different types of land uses, while other municipalities were more specific for more, of a greater variety of uses. We were more restrictive on the use of small-car stalls, so other municipalities allowed more small-car parking than we did. We don't have a specific requirement in our zoning bylaw for handicap parking. We rely on the B.C. Building Code, so that's something that other municipalities did actually include. The loading requirements in terms of trucks and that type of thing are all pretty consistent. We don't allow for shared parking in the zoning bylaw, and that's something that other municipalities had looked at when there's compatible uses, where the same stall can be used by different uses at different times of the day. We don't have a specific requirement for additional parking for a secondary suite, and we don't have any provision for bicycle parking or end-to-trip facilities in our zoning So the recommendations that we have, and this is something that we'd ask council to consider at some future date, is that we would bring back some amendments to the zoning bylaw that would include things such as bicycle parking, end-to-trip facilities. That's also something that was recommended in the cycling plan that council adopted a couple of years ago. Taking a look at adding EV parking into our zoning bylaw to give some incentives for people to provide EV parking. To take a look at shared parking, and if that's something that could be looked at in some areas. And then other issues we could look at are transportation demand management incentives. For example, developments near the Carvalt Transit Exchange may not necessarily require as much parking on-site as in other areas of the township, because they have greater access to transit. So the other thing that we would take a look at is developing a plan for the implementation of time-restricted parking at some locations. The areas that Gary had mentioned already, the Carvalt Transit Exchange, the LEC at some point in the future. And to consider looking at major civic and recreational facilities like the LEC and the hospital. And as I had mentioned, the Transit Exchange and the hospital. So the other thing that we took a look at was enforcement. And as we start to increase areas with time-restricted parking, there is a need to be a little bit more proactive on enforcement to have that be effective. And what we would recommend is if we do move in that direction, that we go towards using more advanced technologies, which are less labor-intensive and they're more economical as the areas you're enforcing are becoming greater. And then the last part is to look, is specific to civic facilities such as the event center, looking at implementing preferred parking for car shares, carpools, EV vehicles, just to encourage those types of uses at our major recreation facilities. And that's actually the end of the presentation, so if there's any questions, Gary and I can answer.
Well, thank you very much for that. I have several here. Counselor Long.
Well, maybe I can save it for the, do you want to move the, discuss the bylaw now?
No, it's just questions for the presentation.
But we're going to ask questions again when the bylaw comes forward, so we could move it up or...
They're here now, so we'll, either way, but may as well ask questions to staff, then if there's debate, we can debate, so.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. In this, in this chapter on Fort Langley, unless I missed it somewhere there, so I understand your recommendations as such, but did you comment on the fact that the, any developments in Fort Langley only require 50% of what everybody else in the township does? Did I miss that? And I'm wondering where that came from, where that is, and where it might be going, because maybe you can clarify that for all of us.
My understanding is that it's from the community plan where it's the properties fronting Glover Road that have a 50% parking reduction. And that was primarily due to the fact that most of those older buildings didn't physically have enough room to provide the full amount of parking that would typically be required with other developments. So it's more of a, what's a practical reality of what could be done with those buildings? The newer developments in Fort Langley, I believe, are actually providing more parking than historically. And that is something that, that's one of the reasons why on Glover Road and a lot of the streets in the core, there's two-hour parking restrictions, because we're trying to make up for the less parking being provided on-site by creating more turnover of the parking that's on the street. So it's sort of trying to compensate for some of that.
I'm confused, are you saying that that, okay, so certainly it was put in historically for the older buildings that were there, but new development that's put in there is still under the same regulation?
I'd have to defer actually to our community development department, I'm not sure what the requirements are for new development.
Your worship, the provisions do apply to current development applications as well, so the 50% reduction is what developments are entitled to take advantage of.
Oh, okay, so, I mean, I'm not putting anybody on the spot, but it's odd that something that's historically put in for a reason is carried forward now, now it's a whole different situation. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Richard.
Yeah, when you did the Langley Memorial Hospital study, did you also include the parking that was going on over at the Blair Pool? Because there's a lot of hospital employees that park in the Blair Pool lot. Or did you just look at the streets around the hospital?
We looked at just the streets around the hospital. So the Blair Pool is owned by the township, and the, that could be managed by the township on its own, in terms of like any other parking lot where you could have enforcement patrols of a parking lot. We may have to, that's why we looked at potentially expanding the areas of two-hour parking, so as some of those lands around the Blair Pool are redeveloped and there's new roads that are constructed, we may have to take a look at potentially putting in some two-hour parking in those areas as well.
Yeah, I think we should put it in for the pool. Was any consideration given to something like impark? I know, for example, Quantlin uses impark, and so they get, I believe it's in the realm of about $400,000 a year just going into their general revenues, but they have no responsibility for policing it, ticketing it, or anything, it's all impark. Did we look at using impark for facilities?
We didn't look at using impark in the township. Now, I think that that was part of the discussions that Gary had with other municipalities who do have some pay parking. So some of it is privately run, and they looked at that. But it wasn't something that we had considered in the township?
So, do other municipalities use impark, and has it been successful for them?
Counselor Richard to the chair. I don't want to speak to, on any particular company, I can say that the city of Surrey does make use of private contractors for some of the enforcement. For example, what they'll do is that there are some firms out there that have a vehicle with cameras and have the camera technology, and so then the city subcontracts that out to them, and they do, they take care of all of that automated enforcement for them. And then in terms of individual off-street parking lots, it's my understanding that different municipalities will put up the, they'll put out a request for proposals and look to see which firm provides them with the, potentially the greatest cash flow and management of their off-street parking. It's, I'm not currently aware of any municipality that does the management of on-street parking other than that automated enforcement by anything other than bylaw enforcement staff.
Okay. And when you were looking at Fort Langley, I know in Langley City, they've, have they got one bylaw officer checking parking, or is it several?
Counselor Richard to the chair. They have several bylaw enforcement officers, and what they do is they allocate the resources as required. There are certain times when there's one person that does the chalking and ticketing, and then if there's special events or something else that's going on within the downtown, then they allocate additional resources.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you for your report, there's lots of really good information in here. Just a couple of quick questions for me. One was on, is suggesting in the report this idea of carpool parking, and, or, and car-share parking. I'm wondering, how are they typically reinforced carpool parking and car-share parking? Like, if you had an event, for example, the Langley Event Center, one suggestion was carpool parking, so would you, would you, was it typical you'd have an attendant who would be wait, sitting there to see if there was at least two people sitting in the car before they would allow them to park? Or how is, how is that actually regulated, car-share and carpool parking?
Carpool parking for visitors is very difficult to regulate, because we don't have somebody sitting there watching, you know, how many people are there. Sometimes for special events, what they'll do is they'll designate an area specifically for people who carpool, so as you enter the parking lot, you may be directed to park to a specific area. Businesses do regulate it to a certain extent where they actually make people register their vehicle to be in a car-pooled spot. So, for example, if it's an office building, that type of thing. So that's a little different, it's easier to enforce when it's employees as opposed to visitors.
Right, okay, so now, now we don't, do we have a car-share program operating in the township of Langley?
No, we don't, not that I'm aware of.
Not at this time.
Yeah. Sure.
The, there are several, as council's probably well aware, there's several car-share programs throughout the Lower Mainland. Typically, they're more concentrated in, on the Broad Peninsula, but they do, they do come out this way for visits, for trips, particularly given the Langley Event Center and the nature of the venue, and the fact that there's a professional hockey team and other types of significant events, that it's quite likely that you would see a car-share program. And it's also a technique that's now being used by more and more communities as a way to encourage their residents to participate in a car-share program by providing preferential parking.
Right, okay. Thank you. What, just the final, I noticed in the report, when I read through the recommendations, certainly support and like all these recommendations, I find that though some of the recommendations are sort of general, and they're not maybe as specific as I, as I would like, maybe around some areas, like the Langley Event Center as one, and also in Fort Langley. I know you'd had a little map of Fort Langley, but those seem to be two areas where there seems to be significant parking challenges, particularly Langley Event Center obviously is event-based. But, you know, you go to those events and often you can't find parking, or you sit and trying to get out of the parking lot, it takes a long time if you're there. And Fort Langley is difficult, especially on a nice sunny day in the summer. And I'm just wondering if, if maybe that's the next step, that we'll see sort of very specific recommendations about what to do in Fort Langley and what to do with Langley Event Center, just as two examples.
Perhaps I could just interject a bit here and advise council that this was just a very broad and preliminary review with the intent of providing council with information about the findings of the study and analysis, and then see council's direction before we delve deeper into the potential remedies or potential measures that council may wish to direct staff to implement.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Counselor Qualley.
Thank you, thanks very much for this. This was a really great report, it was really easy to understand, so thank you very much for that. I have, I have a few questions. One of my questions and one of the areas of concern I have is around the Carvalt Transit Station. And right now, there's a lot of development happening in that area, and I know that on-street, on-street parking is already a challenge. Mr. Vleeg, you said the parking lot's full most days, and it is. And in fact, the building, the tower that's on the corner of 87th, well, tower, I use that term loosely, but the building that's on the corner of 87th and 200th, they are already having to manage their parking internally because of overflow from Carvalt. So they're actually towing cars from that building because of overflow from Carvalt. So I guess my question would be, how, in order of prioritization, would, I know you've recommended some, some additional work there, would that be higher up the list before the neighborhood is further built out? And there, we create this... we create this expectation of free parking when before people move in, if they move in and know it's already time limited when they get there, that might, you know, alleviate some of those problems?
Yeah, there's two ways that you could go there. We could do it before people move in. But I think to a certain extent, a lot of the homes that are being constructed right now have already been purchased. And even before the roads have been constructed and there may already be some expectations with respect to street parking for residents who have yet to move in. One of the recommendations that we came out of this was that we actually go through, sort of formalize a guideline in terms of how we implement time-restricted parking. And one of the things that's very important in that process, which we've been informally doing at the, around the Langley Memorial Hospital, is that we do a ballot of the affected persons on the street. So I think that I would prefer to go through that process, actually have people move in. If it becomes an issue or if the community decides they want to have two-hour parking restricted, then we would go through the ballot process and implement it at that time.
I think for that area specifically, the challenge will be not the people who live there, rather people who are parking there to use transit, right? So I think that maybe doing it ahead of time could alleviate some of the complaints, but I also understand what you're saying. In regards to the secondary suite, I noticed there's no recommendation in the report to add a space for a secondary suite. How come?
So one of the things that we did take a look at was the zoning bylaw. Most municipalities require two stalls per single-family home. The township's very basic requirement is also two stalls for, per single-family home. But in the vast majority of developments that are occurring now, there are either three stalls or four stalls, depending upon if it's a front-loaded, a single-family home or rear-loaded. So we're already in some ways exceeding how many parking stalls are required from some other municipalities. The other challenge is that it's difficult to anticipate which homes would actually have a secondary suite. It's something that's often installed after the fact, after it's already been occupied. So how do you add an off-street parking stall after the home's already been constructed and it's been occupied? It's something that basically has to be done when the home is built. And given that we're already typically requiring up to four on-street, off-street parking stalls, two in a garage, two in a driveway, it's difficult to add more. So it's something that we felt that may not be practical to implement, given that we're already requiring more than the two minimum in most developments.
So I think in places like Brookswood, for example, where they'll be developing at some point between five and 7,000 square foot lots, potentially, I think looking at your survey here, we're the only municipality in the region that doesn't require one parking designated for secondary suites. And so I think even just, although it's already implied because of our bylaw to have the four suite, or the fourth, the four spaces, sorry, I think that having it really clear that that would include one of them for secondary suite is just an acknowledgement that there is likely going to be a secondary suite in that area and that that's included in that, with that?
Your worship, perhaps again, I could just, sorry.
Thank you.
With your indulgence, I could just intervene, provide some comments. Counselor Qualley's questions and comments are quite valid and accurate. Perhaps the appropriate, or the more appropriate reference should have been not that we don't provide for secondary suite parking, but rather it's already included in our requirements. Whereas other municipalities have a separate requirement for when there's no secondary suite, and then they add one or two when there is a secondary suite in some municipalities. As opposed to the township of Langley where outright requirements include, because you know, the majority of the single-family dwellings do provide for secondary suites and we don't have any restrictions as to, you know, which single-family dwelling may not include a secondary suite. Therefore, our zoning bylaw actually provides for the, or has built into it the possibility of a secondary suite. And therefore, the zoning bylaw requirements include the commensurate number of parking stalls, which as Mr. Cordero said, is either three or four in most cases.
Right. No, I understand that. Thank you for the clarity, but I just wanted to see if there would be value in making it implicit, or sorry, more specific in the language that it did include for secondary suite. Because we hear from people, they're complaining that the extras, the street parkings used by secondary suites. And so I think that there's a gap just in information perhaps, rather than factual. I mean, it's the perception that we're not providing parking for them when in fact it is included in the bylaw. So just including that language in so that it is implicit that it's included in that information. So I don't know if that makes sense to anybody or not, but.
Maybe just to follow up on that, when a homeowner applies for their permit for a secondary suite, isn't that the process where they're required to have off-street parking? Is that in our process? You know, they have to prove that they have the parking there? Do they have to have off-street parking?
Your worship, again, the, the requirement is, is an outright requirement at the beginning of the building permit process. Regardless of whether you have a secondary suite or not, the assumption, if you will, is that there will be a requirement for at least three parking stalls. Therefore, the assumption is that there's going to be one additional parking stall required for a secondary suite, whether you require, whether you're going to have one or not. That is the presumption in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I understand. So on that end, but on the, on the business license end, when the homeowner goes to get their permit for the secondary suite, the house is built, they lived in it five years, now they finished the basement. Do they not have to have evidence of a, even though, do they have to show that on their application for the business license?
At that point, your worship, because of the fact that at the time of the building permit, the parking stalls would have been provided, then there's no requirement to actually prove that it actually exists.
Thank you.
Because it's already built, yeah.
Thanks.
We're under the assumption then that they're actually parking in their garage, which likely isn't the case. So my last question for you around this is around the 50% reduction of parking requirements in the village of Fort Langley. And right now, we're just doing a straight 50% discount on that. I wonder if there's an opportunity to do, rather than just discount it, to take the cash in lieu for the other 50%, so not remove that discount? Because like you said, it's, it's important to, I mean, it's the reality of the situation there. But rather than just give the discount, take the 50% cash in lieu, the other 50%, and put that aside for public parking at some point in Fort Langley. So that perhaps on some township-owned property, we could create a parking lot that would be available to people visiting the fort that could actually park instead of, in this parking lot rather than on residential. So doing a savings account, I guess, for a, a public parking lot in Fort Langley?
That's something that could be considered if that's the direction counsel wants to go. We could bring something back in the future for counsel to consider. There was, it was already done. I don't recall where the funding came from, but we did convert some of our public land, an old fire hall site, to a parking lot a few years ago in Fort Langley. So I don't recall where the funding for the parking lot came from though.
But right now, the 50% is just a reduction. We're not receiving any cash in lieu, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so I'd be interested in talking about that moving forward.
The comment, your worship, in that case is that at a very high level, without doing the, the actual analysis, just knowing the costs of constructing parking facilities or parking structures and the minimal redevelopment potential, it is likely not going to amount to much to be able to actually offset the parking demand. But certainly, as, as Mr. Cordero referenced, it's something that we would, we could take a look at based on counsel direction.
Well, it could be included as a parking enhancement. So it could be converted, that money could be turned into an EV station. There's lots of things it could be used for, rather than just giving up that 50% and us funding that ourselves. So anyhow, it's just a thought going forward that rather than just giving that 50% for nothing, we should be, you know, perhaps collecting something to enhance the parking situation that's happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. And thank you very much for your report. It was very interesting. Just to follow up, and I won't belabor the point, it seems that there's a lot of interest in the Fort Langley parking situation. I know a lot of us have had experience going there and having some difficulty finding a parking spot. I also had flagged with your report the potential consideration to remove the 50% relaxation there. My thought was that because we have cash in lieu of parking, then with the 50% relaxation right there, you have a problem because we're not requiring as many as we should. But my thought is more to the fact that now that we have this baseline of information, that counsel might want to consider going in the direction of looking at a specific study in Fort Langley. Because I understand that you've reviewed opportunities potentially to put in metering and that might not be the best approach, but also just to look at opportunities to do other maybe innovative things like having a designated area that's owned by the township, for example, or a community group, and having a shuttle bus taking people into the core. I certainly know other tourist destinations who have a similar problem have undertaken a similar strategy. And that way, you know, it, it provides an opportunity. You're not really taking anything away. And I do feel for the residents because there are a lot of events in Fort Langley in particular, and as it densifies with more stores and people living there, which is wonderful, we do have the, I guess unintended consequence of the buildup of cars and where to park them. I always thought it'd be great if they could fold up into a suitcase size once you don't need them anymore and kind of take them off. But yeah, I, I think that that probably would be a good next step. And just, I did want to follow up on what Counselor Qualley was saying about the secondary suite parking. I, I do think it would be helpful if we're looking at new development to just assume that we are having secondary suites there, but to be more overt in identifying the fact that they do, even though we're prescribing a certain amount of parking spots, that we're pre-identifying the fact that this has to happen. But I know characteristically, you know, there's many homes that they have a, a suite in them and there's lots more than just one a car that's attached to the suite. So that could eat up, you know, another two or three of those parking spots, not to mention what the family needs there. So just to be, you know, a little bit more cognizant of that as we're moving forward in our neighborhood plans. But thank you very much for the report.
No further questions. I want to thank you for, for that. I'm looking forward to the coffee table version of the entire report.
Won't be hard copy though.
Oh, okay.
Won't be hard, Don.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll get going here. All right, no delegations. Move directly to reports to counsel. And the first one is F1, our shared history, historic context statement and thematic framework. There's a motion that counsel endorse. Counselor Long second, my Counselor Fox. Just discussion on this. Counselor Long?
Well, we've already said so many wonderful things about it. I was happy to move it.
Thanks. Counselor Davis?
You know, one thing I forgot to mention is that everybody brought their token Muffet. Anyhow, thanks for, okay, I just.
We have our token Davis. Yeah, there you go. All right, I'm going to call the question on F1. And it carries unanimously. We want to F3. This is Agricultural Land Commission, application number 100322, Radicop at 2442852 Avenue. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox and seconder. Second, Counselor, come on, don't be shy. Counselor Qualley, Counselor Richter.
Yeah. I was wondering, we got a, a letter here. I think it came in today's distributed, yeah, item number one, with regards to the drainage right-of-way lines at 51st Avenue, as well as the rock pits being overly full and retention of poultry barns. And I was wondering if we could forward this letter, I mean, if this passes. I personally think it seems like you're severing a five-acre parcel unnecessarily. But if it does pass, if we could also forward this item one letter to the ALC for their consideration on the drainage issues.
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, those are typically local government jurisdiction requirements. Certainly we can take a look at them if and when, if it was approved by counsel and if it was approved by the land commission, and if it was then sent back for approval by the approving officer, it would be something that we, we could take a look at. It would be recommended not to make it a, another agency's requirements necessarily.
Well, Mr. Seffy, you could hold on to that letter then. And if this passes, and if Agricultural Land Commission does approve this request, then you would have it on file. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, your worship.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F3. And it carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Davis opposed. Move on to F4, appointment of external auditor for the township. And this point came KPMG for an additional two years. Counselor Fox second. Counselor Qualley, discussion on F4. Seeing none, I'll call, oh, Arneson, sorry, Counselor Arneson.
Thank you. Thank you, worship. I just had a couple of questions. My first one, I guess, is through your worship to our administrator or staff. I'm just wondering when the last time we had a different auditor in the township of Langley?
Ms. Sinclair.
Through your worship to Counselor Arneson. I had a note that our last time we went to RFP was 2006, but I believe it was KPMG prior to that as well. So I'd have to get that information and get back to you.
Okay, I was just curious. I, I understand the rationale for continuing with consistency and they're already familiar with us and our practices. And so it's probably quite rational. I just wondered if there might not be a sense that oversight, just by one auditor, maybe having a different set of eyes on, on your books might be a good idea just for another reference. So, because I don't know what best management practices are in that regard.
Mr. Becken.
Your worship, it could be the, my recollection is actually that BDO was the auditor in 2006. We went to a competitive process and KPMG was selected. I think we did that once since then. Is that correct?
I thought we did one.
2006 to 2011, and then there was an extension, 2012 to 16. And that's where we're at.
So in shorthand, that means there was an option in the contract that was originally put forth to extend it. So we're at the end of that contract. We're simply saying because of convenience and timing of events we're going to see in 2018, that it'd be wise to get beyond that and then go through a full tender process.
Perhaps at that, the next time we could do that. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the question on F4.
There's a tender 2018, right?
And it carries unanimously. We want to correspondence. This is one item of correspondence. Could I have a motion to receive? Counselor Davis, second, my Counselor Sparrow. Any discussion on receipt? Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Through you to staff, I know last time we had a request to do something and we cannot make proclamations by policy, but I'm wondering if we could use it as an opportunity to use our technology that we have on the Coal Harmony Bridge to color it purple on October 10th.
I asked, I was asked, Mr. Becken, that question, if we had purple light bulbs? And he said we did, so can we?
Perfect.
Can we accommodate that as a direction?
You do, your worship. The challenge is there's no one to install them. So if counsel could gather there just the day before, we have a ladder.
Making a long ladder, okay. Yeah, just screw in a light bulb. Oh, that's a good one.
We can change the lights. There's some complications. So if this is referred to staff, we'll certainly attempt to do so.
Or even some of them are, it would help. Okay, thank you. So we'll take this direction. All right, I'll call the question on.
Is that seen then?
It's, yeah, it's just by direction. So they're going to work on it. So we'll just do the vote for receipt. Okay, that carries unanimously. And so, and is there any other business?
Yes.
Counselor Fox.
Thank you, your worship. I did put a motion on table. I realize it was not a notice motion in the appropriate amount of time, but I would put it there. If someone seconds it, fine. If someone doesn't, we'll have to do, deal with it.
However, could, your motion indicates that there's three local MLAs, but we do have four.
I know that, well, there'll have to be a correction.
So if we could just, so you're moving it with the change that would be four local MLA syndicate support. Okay, thanks. So you're moving it. Second, my Counselor Qualley. I'm going to clear the queue so that anybody who wants to speak to it, Counselor Fox.
Well, thank you, your worship. I did request a 628-page document, which we got electronically earlier in the week, mid, last week, from the Corporation of Delta. I don't know if it's a Well, thank you, your worship. I did request a 628-page document, which we got electronically earlier in the week, mid-last week, from the Corporation of Delta. I don't know if it's a city or a corporation. I don't, I might be.
Corporation.
I might be.
Corporation.
We need to, we need to probably alter city to corporation. Anyway, this Massey Replacement Bridge project, I feel, is very important as a resident of South Langley in terms of trying to access the city of Vancouver, city of Richmond, or points north. The present structure, as is shown in the graph, that, and I've put some page numbers in there for you, on page 623, the bridge replacement is the best, the most feasible option in terms of safety and longevity. I think that the context is there. There is some timeliness associated with this, because I know the city of Richmond is putting on a, a motion tonight to scrap the, the bridge replacement. And I feel it's important that we actually have a bridge replacement. I don't feel there's been any precedent set or information garnered that supports tunnels, further expansion of tunnels, including the existing, maintaining the existing tunnels. So I think we need to continue this project. I recognize it's, it's expensive. I recognize it's not in the mayor's plan. But I think for servicing south of the Fraser, especially the western portion, this becomes a very important link. And it's also the major gateway into Richmond and Vancouver for tourism, for traffic, goods, traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to support this, change city to Corporation of Delta, and four, a local MOA. So that's why I'm moving it now.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Okay, so it says be resolved that we write to the mayor. I mean, she can't put the project through, so shouldn't that be switched around a bit, maybe?
Well, she.
I mean, we don't muck around with it too much, but I think you probably want to be careful and send it to the premier and then CC the mayor or something like that. I don't know.
Well, it is.
And it says, and further be it resolved that we write to the premier.
Premier and Minister of Transportation.
Okay, that's fine.
Now, I wonder if you shouldn't include, you know, the mayor of Surrey, but I, I think most of us, south of the Fraser, and it also references in your whereas, but that doesn't really matter. It's the south of Langley, but I should probably change to south of the Fraser. But, so that's just a little bit of housekeeping, I suppose. But I think the concern, I would like to add, not necessarily on this, but I think we should also be writing to the minister about other concerns that we've had now that there's a change, right? So I don't want to muddy this one up, but I know we have a summer break coming. But I wonder if we can entertain also staff renewing all the letters that we've sent to the previous Minister of Transportation about some of the concerns on, on the freeway, et cetera, et cetera. They should be reset now to the new minister. So I just put that aside. But on this one, I think, I think you might want to see what Surrey's up to as well. And your worship, the news keeps saying that, that Mayor Lois Jackson is the only mayor south of the Fraser. But I mean. They, they haven't asked. They haven't asked you. They haven't asked me. So she's the only one who's been vocal, I think, in the media. However, and I heard this during campaign also, but I never received a phone call. And I would certainly, I, I've seen the lineups and.
Oh, yes. So, so.
I've been in those lineups. I don't know why they want to isolate themselves. South of Fraser does need to get across that river.
Well, I know that I've, I've done some research, and Mayor Hepner has also seized the benefit of the, of the bridge. But I think one of the concerns was the priority, that why this was given priority over the Batulo and such, stuff like that. So again, I guess that's just something that we need to keep in mind. But sending a letter, sure, let's do it. I researched the cost of a, of a tunnel would be even more, so.
Thank you.
Maybe we're not going to go there.
Okay, no further discussion. I'm going to call the question on I1. And it carries with Counselor Arneson opposed. Is there any other business? Okay. Boy, just lit up like a Christmas tree. Counselor Richter.
Okay. And items distributed to us on July 20th, there were two I wanted to ask staff if they could give us an update on. Item number 24, with regards to potential fire concern in Fort Langley. I'm very conscious, as I sure are many of the residents or all of the residents in, in Langley, about fire hazards this dry summer. And I'm wondering if council could get a status report on item number 24.
Certainly. Mr. Becken and I know staff have been looking into that with the property owners. So if we get a report back as a memo, thank you.
And the other item was item number 25, which looks like it's a public safety concern with regards to people jumping off the bridge in Fort Langley, onto boats underneath, or skateboarding on the canoe deck, leaving tons of garbage behind. I'm wondering if we could get an update on that as well, too. Particularly, I'm concerned about the jumping off of the bridge. That, that could be very, very dangerous.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Sparrow.
I just wanted to say a quick note. I'm hoping it's a, a comment to staff. I hope they are the ones that did it. But I was out on my run this morning and noticed that they had great school, summer school signs out on the, at the high school, in front of the high school, as a reminder to those driving that the school zone is in effect. So I don't know if that was us or if it was the school district.
Well, I hope you slowed down in your run.
I did. I slowed down on my run to appreciate it, actually.
That was.
Was it us?
It was township.
Thank you. I, I think that's really great. They're, they're well-placed and a good reminder to, to drivers that there is summer school in effect and to still keep with the school zone. So I saw that, and we had a previous discussion, I think it was last council meeting about it, and I was really excited to see them already up. I think it's a great job by staff to get those up.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Worship, it was brought to my attention that somebody had sent an email to mayor and council, but we only receive it today. 222 pages at 11:59. So I'm not sure how we can really get this all, all digested before the meeting. Some of the, some of these items pertain to what we're talking about now. But when you look through the, the package, some of the emails were sent like last Thursday. So I'm just wondering, you know, as summer's coming too, why is it that when a public send a, a letter to mayor and council, it doesn't actually get emailed to mayor and council? It goes into the holding pattern and comes out whenever, whenever this distribution list comes. I, I mean, I would prefer to know that if someone is emailing mayor and council, maybe not just to the mayor, but if it's mayor and council, we should get it at real time.
I'll ask Mr. Becken, so.
Well, I think the main concern, the main concern is.
I guess it's just a comment that it's very concerning, because if I'd gotten the email on Thursday, I would have had some chance to do something about it. And it was emailed on Thursday, one of them anyway.
So it's between the distribution lists. Mr. Becken.
Well, it's all of them. Anything that's, I guess, anything that's emailed to mayor and council doesn't really come to council. Comes on the distribution list. Mr. Becken, maybe.
Worship, close. If it goes to individual members of mayor and council, then we don't include it. If it goes to mayor and council, it comes out through the package process. So those that missed the cutoff on Thursday would arrive to you on Monday. It just depends on the volume and what happens in between. There's challenges. If we try to start to email them, then we would probably be better to have individual distribution list on a daily basis, which may not be practical.
Well, I mean, yeah, and I don't want to cause trouble, but here is, here's something that was sent, yes, after the cutoff Thursday, I'm sure, but now I don't see it till today. And then another one was an invitation for opening at the museum on Thursday, which I now have, but that's nice. If I had it last Friday, it would have been handier.
Time sensitive. I know we try and get them out if they're, you know, invitations. But, okay, thank you. Duly noted. Counselor Fox?
Thank you. A few things here. First off, on the July 6th distribution list, item number 13, which is a letter from Diane Cask, talking about rats and education and so on and so forth. I'm wondering, we have a contract with LEPs. Why are we not using LEPs to do the educational piece with respect to rats? And also, I would add to that with using LEPs as an educational component about wildlife concerns, because again, I go back to a comment I made the other day, other meeting about wildlife and deer in South Langley. And I think that, why are we using our staff and not using LEPs to deal with the educational piece, dealing with the ongoing, you know, he or she suggests, report the sightings? Well, why can't, why do we need to use our engineering staff to collate reporting of sightings? Why don't we phone LEPs? And LEPs does the reporting of sightings and the, and the overall piece that goes with that and presenting it to our staff. So I think we need to, to transfer this whole thing to LEPs, make it part of their contract. Education, both of wildlife, we've seen in the past where we've had wildlife education requests for everything from beavers to opossums to raccoons. But why isn't LEPs not doing this rat inventory? Why is LEPs not doing this, the deer issues in South Langley? And I would make a request to staff that we build in the LEPs as our front person, front agency on these issues. That's my first point. Any action, maybe through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffy?
Becken, is that something you can perhaps just take a look at?
We'll have to look into that, your worship.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and please. Item number 15 on that, could we have Mr. Larson reply to Mr. Pitts about water rationing? I think that there's lots of information, especially when you see on the global TV, Christie Gordon and other celebrities talking about why there's water rationing, but maybe somebody can respond to him. On the July 24th distribution, we got an item number on page 52, there's an item from Mr. Conway about reopening Zero Avenue. Maybe what might be valuable with respect to that is a, a response to Mr. Conway, but more importantly, an update from staff with respect to what's happening with Highway 13 upgrades, because they're supposed to be started and almost done. And that's to include an upgrade to Zero Avenue and what's going to happen in, in a, in a bypass. We've talked long and hard about that over the years. The money was put aside. And so I, I'm just wondering what's going to happen there. So maybe we could get staff to do an, an update for us and respond to Mr. Conway. And the last one is Mr. Carson. Mr. Carson wonders about the boulevard maintenance and on Fraser Highway, and I kind of agree with him. It's looking pretty shabby there, east of 232nd. And maybe a, a whippersnapper could knock down the weeds around there. And I'm still not sure if it's our responsibility or the contractors at this point in time. Thank you.
Staff are aware of it. Okay. Duly noted. Any other business?
Termination.
Counselor Davis moves termination. Do I have a second, there? Counselor Qualley. All those in favor? All those carried? Thank you.